All right, as per council policy, this is the first city council meeting following national holidays, so we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk, please call the roll. The deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Council members Brown?
Here.
Hayson?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
We have a quorum. Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meetings. This would be a public hearing on June 10th, a meeting on July 1st, and a joint, we didn't have the joint meeting, so just two things. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those with the correction that the mayor made.
Actually, we did have the joint meeting, we just had one agenda item rather than two. So it's July 8th as well. So moved by Dean?
Second.
Second by Sharice. Any corrections? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. We have public input. I have two cards, one from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer concerns. They are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. The second input card is from Eldress Melinda Carr with continued concerns about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Unfinished business. We have ordinance number 2019-07-037, which is an ordinance approving a major variance at 201 West University Avenue, and this is the Culvers development. So presenting will be Planning Manager Lori Pearson. And I believe the owners or the developers are here with us tonight in case you have questions.
That's correct. Thank you very much.
Mayor Marlin? Yes.
Can you tell me, because we didn't have it in the packet, I was wondering if you could tell me where it is on the Plan Commission so we can pull it up? Do you know when it was?
It was at the Zoning Board of Appeals on June 19th.
Sorry, zoning. Thank you.
You didn't have the...
The original memo went out in time for the July 1st meeting. We did a short supplement, but a lot of the original information is still available in the July 1st meeting materials.
So we have the memo dated July 12th in this packet?
That is the supplement. It corrects a few items, but the original, we didn't want to recirculate the same items again, but the minutes, for instance, from the zoning board meeting would be in the July 1st council packet. Okay, so, this is a case of a major variance, and it's a major variance because the request is to allow an electronic message board sign in the B4 zoning district. Currently, they are not allowed in the B4 zoning district, so this is a request to allow one there at the site, Race and University Avenue, as the mayor mentioned, the site of the new Culvers. So the reason it's a major is because it is not defined as something that could potentially be a minor. So it, by default, is a major variance. And went to the zoning board, as I said, on June 19th, and is before you with a request for final approval. So the electronic message board signs are allowed in the B3 district, which on the zoning map that I have in front of you is the red area. The site itself is this purple area, which as I mentioned, is zoned B4. So the request is to allow an electronic message board to be on a freestanding sign that otherwise meets code here at the corner, University and Race. And one of the reasons why it is requested to be at this location is because in many ways, the site is very similar to a lot of the B3 properties in the area, so having an electronic message board for this type of use would allow this use to be more competitive with other similar uses along the corridor. It would be smaller than what would be allowed in the B3 district, and that is by the developer or the owner's choice. They are suggesting something that's slightly smaller than it could be otherwise if it were to be just down the street. And as I mentioned, it did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals on June 19th. They found that the findings were met and recommended approval with the standard condition that it would be constructed in compliance, general conformance, to the plans that are attached. So the plans that are attached to the memo that is for this meeting are the ones that we are suggesting are approved with the ordinance. They show some more, some correct distances, setbacks, and height for the sign there at the corner. So I just want to point out that the ordinance that is forwarded today is the one that we would recommend council approve. And the owner is here, if you have any questions, and I'm also taking technical questions.
Any questions for Lori? Jared, and then Dennis?
Lori, just because we don't have those previous minutes easily available to us, but we're being recommended for conditional approval of this major variance, can you just let us know what those, you said, it's, still meet the findings expressed by the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as for reasons outlined in staff memo? Can you, what those findings were, can you tell us what those were?
Those are actually also outlined in the ordinance, so if it's easier for you to scan them, since it's about a page worth.
Where are they at in the ordinance?
Let me check today's ordinance. It should be page two.
Page two.
Page two?
Mm-hmm. But just to summarize, the typical ones with the criteria, they found, the zoning board found that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, in part because a lot of that corridor is zoned B3 with a lot of this type of sign already. They found that it would not be a nuisance to the neighborhood because it would adhere to other requirements already for electronic sign displays. They found that it would use, let's see, as a result, a strict application of the ordinance, they would not be able to use the sign to its fullest extent without the messaging. And I feel like a missing one here. Oh, and also important to note that the reason it was zoned before, in part, was because of the right-of-way expansion by iDOT, and so the buildable area of the lot was reduced severely, so they requested the rezoning. So for those number of reasons, the zoning board found that the criteria were met.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah, Lori, I guess I've got a couple of questions about general direction of signage in our community along these corridors. In the past, well, in the past, the B4 corridor requires, what kind of signage?
So in the B4 district, there's a variety of signs that are allowed. That would be wall signs, freestanding signs, projecting signs, for the most part. Currently, electronic message board signs are not permitted in the B4 district for any use.
Are the signages along the B4 area, is the preferred signage monument signs, which are lower down and based closer to the ground?
There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that gives any preference. I will say that thinking of the downtown area, there aren't a whole lot of freestanding signs that I can recall. I think there's, you know, a couple here and there, the church near Lincoln Square, for instance, but they're not, there are not a lot of freestanding signs. And someone can correct me if they're thinking of, if they can think of anything else, but I can't think of a lot of freestanding signs.
Well, when you say freestanding, are you talking about pole signs or?
Signs that are not attached to a building is how we would define freestanding.
Freestanding, okay. So I just went out and looked today, and I thought it was kind of interesting that on Cunningham Avenue, North Cunningham Avenue, Carter's Furniture has a monument sign. It's not a pole sign, so it's a lower-profile sign. The McDonald's on Cunningham has a nine-foot-tall monument sign, and the new OSF Ergo Urgent Care Center has also got a lower monument sign. These are signs that don't really go past the height of the first floor, this one story of the building. They usually come up to the eaves of a roof. Another example is the Patel Law Offices across the street from this location. Lucky Louie's, her Lucky Lou's Gaming Location, and the Carl Emergency Location. So I guess my concern is that the monument sign is a more progressive, kind of a more of a modern way of looking at signage along arteries where we're not having things up on poles, but we're trying to go to a lower landscaping kind of a sign usage. And I know that there are still a lot of older signage around on University Avenue. Red's Muffler Shop has a sign on a tall pole. Windy City Express, the Midas Muffler is on a tall pole. And the newer Jimmy John's and Panda Express are on pole signs too, but they're about 16-foot high, so they're about the same size as the sign that's being asked for. So I know that when Walgreens was asking to put up a sign back several years ago, you know, we had a discussion about the direction of signage in our community, and we talked about the preference for trying to make the signs lower and less, reducing the height of them in general, and making them look more visible still to an automobile, which is a lower viewpoint than, like a truck, or it's really probably even lower viewpoint than a pedestrian in a lot of cases, because people are sitting in a car and going down the street. So I guess my concern is that although there are a lot of other signs that are on posts in the area, and we've been allowing them in the B3, is it really wise for us to allow them in the B4 and continue the trend on pole signs when we could have an option to modernize our concept about signage in general and prefer monumental signs?
Well, just to clarify, so they are, the sign that is currently installed today, the one on a pole?
I see it's already installed, yes.
That is, that is allowed by right, in its current configuration, without the electronic message board. And one piece that is not on that sign yet, which may get closer to what you're looking for, but admittedly, probably not fully, is, I think it's about a 27-inch-wide, how would you describe that, sort of a cladding?
Pedestal?
Yes, a cladding along the pole. So at least it will be more substantial than just the pole that is today. I think they're waiting to see if the electronic message board is approved, because obviously you would need a different-sized cladding, depending on if the message board is approved.
Okay. I guess I just want to bring this up as, for the council to be aware that we really can have choices about the kinds of signage, and making signage maybe more beautified by making choices that are less traditional, as far as everything is up in a tall pole so that you can see it from the expressway kind of a sign, to the signs that are scaled to the streetscape itself.
And when I responded before, I was responding specifically within B4. There's nothing encouraging freestanding or monument signs versus pole signs. But what the ordinance does overall is it says that if you do a lower sign, no higher than eight feet, you can be closer to the sidewalk, for instance. If you do a monument-style sign, you can be larger than if you don't do a monument sign. So there are some incentives, so to speak, to do that kind of sign, but if one elects to set it back the required distance, then there's nothing in the ordinance that would prohibit a pole sign.
Yeah. As a city planner, do you think it might be wise for us to revisit that?
We have a lot on our plate, so I will leave that up to those that give me direction.
All right. Well, I wouldn't mind hearing from other members of the city council about preference in the future for kinds of signage, and maybe giving more direction for the beautification of our city streets. I'm not going to oppose this. It's not tremendously tall, but I just want to have a conversation about direction in the future.
Sharice?
I think the one thing I would just like to know is, is the only thing that's different regarding the zoning with a B3 and a B4 in the signage is the fact that one gets to have message signing and one doesn't, or what is the?
In terms of this kind of sign, there could be other little nuances and other types of signs, but in terms of this sort of sign, yes, that is the only difference here. They are setting it back the same amount that is required in B4, which is the same amount that is required in B3, but it's the electronic message board that is the big difference here.
So the message board, because I did happen to find my stuff from the previous, what was supposed to be for the previous meeting. So what I'm looking at is different signage from different fast-food restaurants on University, and one of them has a pole, just one, but the rest of them seem to be built upon something. So is that basically the kind of signage that's going to be Culvers, the ones that have, seem to have a mantle of sorts?
I would characterize it as sort of a hybrid between the two, so there will be something coming down, hiding the pole a bit, but it does not extend the full width of the sign.
Okay.
So it'll be a little bit more substantial than the pole, but it won't be a full all the way down to the ground, like the Dairy Queen, for instance.
Okay. And do you think that it would probably be distracting drivers at all? Would it be distract, will it be a distraction?
Since that site is a signalized intersection, there is not a requirement that we do a visibility triangle calculation to make sure it doesn't block anything, but our engineers took a look at that anyway and said it is not an issue for visibility. I'm not sure, since it can't flash or anything like that, I'm not sure it'd be a distraction in that sort of way, but it doesn't block.
But it will have the message thing, like, like the whole butterburgers thing that's on, on the corner right now?
Well, there are requirements on how often it can change, so it's not like a rapid, a rapid change.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm not an expert on designing restaurants and designing signage to be sure that people can find you, but, but what I do note is that this is on a very busy street where, relative to the rest of Urbana, traffic moves relatively fast. And I think there has to be a prominent sign, otherwise people are just going to go by and not know that Culvers is there. And nobody wants that.
Mary Alice?
So basically, if I look at these signs that were in the packet previously, it looks to me like Nero's Gero's is the one that's closest to the proposed sign, minus the fact that it's just a pole for Nero's Gero's, and it would be about eight feet wide, I believe, is the proposal. So...
For the sign at the top, it's about nine.
The sign at the top is nine, but the pole, or whatever is going to be around the pole, oh, we don't have the, we don't actually have the dimensions. It's the message sign that's eight feet wide.
Right, right. And then the cladding is about 27 inches wide.
But just to kind of reiterate what Sharice said, which is basically the only difference here is not the size of the sign, it's not the setback of the sign. The only difference is whether or not they can have that electronic.
That is what the variance request is for.
So that's, that's the only difference. Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, as far as the orientation of the sign facing east, or so you can read it from the east and west, makes sense in that corridor. The only thing I'd be slightly worried about is if this sets a precedent for allowing other signs along, other B4 areas along University to the east there. As long as they had maintained that east-west orientation toward traffic on University, I'd be okay, but I'd be a little worried about something, say, on the corner of Broadway and University that face, where you could see it from the south, that would be more downtown feel, because I think our B4 is supposed to maintain that downtown feel. So just kind of to get that on the record, that I'm supporting this, but I wouldn't support it if it was facing the other way.
Well, a future one would also be a variance, so that would come to you, so, yeah. But thank you for that direction.
Okay. And as far as Dennis's point about the pedestal, I know in some places the pedestal's good, but I'm also sometimes concerned on corners with visibility, and the pedestal's taken up more. I've been by here several times, and it doesn't look like this would be a problem, and who knows what they're going to plant there. Maybe they'll block the visibility down lower anyway, but pedestal signs definitely, you know, you can't see through them, and you can see around the posts a little bit better. I think 16 feet is a reasonable height. Yeah, like, some others have noticed other signs in that area. I think Midas must be like 20 or 30 feet. I don't know. But, yep, that looks good to me.
Are there any questions for the owners who are here?
Okay. Can I ask another question?
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Just for the benefit of everybody knowing exactly what to expect, the digital signs that we have, and we allow for the restaurants that are on the University Avenue, are regulated as far as like, the speed with, by which the text can change. We don't allow scrolling images or moving images, because that would be a distraction for a motorist. And I can't remember what the change rate of the text on the sign is. I know that it has to be over 10 seconds, but I can't remember what we have as an ordinance.
And I can't either, so I'm looking at that.
Yeah.
30 seconds.
30 seconds?
I think it's 30.
All right. And we've chosen those restrictions for public safety and also for visual preference, after having looked at various samples in the past. So I just want to let the owners know that you can't have flashing, you can't have scrolling images, moving images across, and the text can't change faster than a 30-second period. And there might be another restriction, but I can't remember what it is.
Well, if there's brightness and that kind of thing, we can...
Yes, that's right. The luminosity of the sign. So as long as you meet all those.
Discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move conditional approval of the major variance request for ordinance number 2019-07-037, an ordinance approving a major variance for 201 West University Avenue. That came from ZBA case number 2019-MAJ-02. Be approved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Will the deputy clerk, please, call the roll? Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Hayson?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
I'm going to pass, because I don't really, I'm not really against it, but I don't really actually support it. I'd prefer a pedestal sign at this location.
Are you voting present?
Present.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much. Next is reports from the Committee of the Whole. Sharice, Percy?
Okay, the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole recommended that the city council take a single vote to consider approval of the following items appearing on the consent agenda. A, Revolution Number 2019-07-026R, a resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium, Habitat PY 2018. Resolution Number 2019-07-027R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat CHDO, operating PY 2018. Resolution Number 2019-07-028R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat CHDO, developer PY 2018. Resolution Number 2019-07-029R, a resolution approving amendment number one to an emergency solutions grant subrecipient agreement with the CU Men's Shelter. And ordinance number 2019-07-038, an ordinance amending the intergovernmental agreement for the creation of the Champaign County Geographic Information System Consortium.
Does anyone request moving any of these items to the regular agenda? Seeing none. We have no public input cards related to these items.
Then I remove that the five previously stated items appear in the consent agenda for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jared. And then we'll need a motion to consider the consent agenda, which was made by Sharice and seconded by Jared. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Okay. I, for the committee, I move passage of the five previous stated items appearing on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Bill, to put all these items in the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay. With no further discussion, will the clerk, please, call the roll? Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hayson?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu? Yes.
Those five items pass. Thank you. Reports of special committees? Reports of officers? I had a couple of things. One, I wanted to announce that there will be no council or committee meetings next Monday, July 22nd, or July 29th. That is the fifth Monday of the month. So the next time that we'll be together in this room is August 5th for the Committee of the Whole and the Town Board meeting. I also wanted to let the public know that the...
Council, not committee?
Committee.
On the August 5th, it's a council, not committee.
Okay. Okay, council meeting, sorry. And then there'll be a coffee with the mayor on July 25th, 9 o'clock, at Salt and Light, and the public is invited to come out, have a cup of coffee, and anything you want to talk about, we're available to talk. And I'll be there with actually a number of department heads, and usually the police chief, fire chief, and city council members are welcome to come as well. So we, this is a quarterly event, and we move around to different locations in the community. And then finally, I have an update on the issue related to the events at the Independent Media Center. This was reported last week, but I will report it again for the record tonight. So last Wednesday, Carol Mitten and I had a very productive meeting with the leadership of the Independent Media Center, and attending from there were Danielle Genowitz, Karen Medina, Shayah Robinson, Stuart Levy. The City of Urbana will refund $300 in event permit fees paid by the IMC. The City will revoke the 12-month probationary period and all fines. Special event permits will be required at the IMC if the IMC or any group hosting an event there will be using public resources. That involves things like street closures, or putting up barricades, or that sort of thing, or if public resources are required, or if the event involves alcohol, which will require a temporary permit for that, including sales, purchase, service, or consumption of alcohol. These are the sorts of permits that apply to every citywide event. The City and the IMC together will draft a memorandum of understanding to cover issues related to operation of the event center. City's going to provide the first draft of the MOU. We've already started working on our sections internally. I'm sure the IMC will be drafting other sections, and then we'll, we'll put them all together. And Alderman Jared Miller and some others have also offered to help particularly providing input on music events at the IMC due to your extensive experience there, so thank you for that. On Wednesday, July 17th, the IMC is hosting a meeting with, I believe, the Illinois Arts Council, but they'll also involve a tour of the building, and I intend to tour the IMC at that time. You're invited to attend as well. That's 5:30 is the meeting, and the tour follows at the IMC. On Sunday, July 28th, the IMC is hosting a meeting with a number of individuals and groups who've booked space there, and they'll be reviewing guidelines for use of the space. And I'm sure coming out of this meeting will be information that we'll be incorporating into the MOU. So that's where we are so far. I wanted to thank the community members, IMC leaders. I wanted to thank the community members, IMC leadership, city staff, city council for your guidance on this issue. I'm very confident that we will address the city's public safety concerns while supporting this inclusive, um, arts center in our downtown. Next item on the agenda is new business. Any new business? Seeing none. I think this meeting is adjourned.